Good evening, folks. Welcome to Committee of the Whole for Monday, June 3rd. I call the meeting to order and would like to acknowledge that we are in the lands of the Wasonic people. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Shall I move?
All in favor? Motion carried. We have no presentations. We'll go straight to our first report. We do have a staff report dated May 28th with recommendations for legalization options for recreational cannabis in Sydney.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move, in essence, the staff recommendation, adding just a little bit to number one, there are four parts, and adding a fifth part. I have a copy here that I can circulate afterwards if it's seconded. And first is that staff bring forward a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw number 2015, A, to allow the retail sale of recreational cannabis within the downtown Sydney C1 zone, which is commercial, excluding businesses fronting on to Beacon Avenue, Sydney Avenue, James White Avenue, and on the streets south of Bevan Avenue; B, to allow the commercial processing and commercial distribution of cannabis in the West Sydney M1 zone, which is industrial; C, to exclude the commercial growing of cannabis in Sydney; and D, to exclude the processing, distribution, and retail sale of cannabis edibles and concentrates products in Sydney. And then continue with two, three, and four in the staff recommendation as presented. And number two is that staff prepare a draft policy for council's consideration.
For council's consideration, that would guide the consideration of recreational cannabis license applications in Sydney; three, that staff prepare an amendment to land use procedures by law number 1380 to include an application fee for cannabis-related business license applications; and four, that staff review and if required, bring forward amendments to business license by law number 2119, and municipal ticket information by law number 1975, to ensure that these bylaws are consistent with the regulation of cannabis within the town of Sydney; and five, that staff bring forward, at the time of bringing forward the bylaw, a plan for communication on public awareness of the process for these bylaw and policy changes, including the opportunities for the public to submit their feedback in writing, online, and at council meetings.
Second here for that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. If folks want a copy. So I'd like to speak to a number of things. First, to thank staff for the comprehensive report. I think it's very helpful for council, but also for the public, to have the background information.
Excuse me, is there only five, six?
Sorry, two.
Okay, thank you.
Are you good? Thank you for the report. And I think it's helpful, just for the public who may be viewing this at a later date or don't see the agenda, that on June 11th, as background, on June 11th, 2018, council adopted bylaw number 2155, which was a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit the retail sale, production, and distribution of recreational cannabis within the town of Sydney. And the intent at that time was this blanket prohibition would be a stopgap measure that would be put in place until federal and provincial legislative and regulatory changes were finalized throughout the second half of 2018, as we know that occurred in October. And following the federal government's legalization of cannabis in October, all three levels of government are now involved in regulating the growing processing, distribution, sale, and consumption of recreational cannabis in Canada. And lastly, that local governments can regulate various aspects of the cannabis industry, in particular through their zoning and business licensing regulations. First, I want to say that I support the retail sale of recreational cannabis in Sydney in the locations specified in the motion, because it is now a legal product. It is a product that is heavily regulated by the provincial and federal governments, and we allow the sale of alcohol, which is a similar product in many respects. Just to speak to including cannabis edibles and concentrates products in the motion, as is widely known, the federal government has indicated that cannabis edibles and concentrates products are expected to be authorized in the fall of this year. And I believe it's prudent to wait until that authorization occurs and see what the specifics are before amending our bylaws and policies. There's one point that I would certainly seek the views of my council colleagues with regards to including Beacon Avenue as an area for excluding a cannabis retail location. To explain the other locations, Sydney Avenue has some retail in some blocks on the south side of Sydney Avenue and James White, but it is residential on the north side. And I think it would be best if we did not have commercial retail cannabis locations across from residential. And similarly, on the streets, First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, or Seventh, south of Bevan, there are fingers, if you will, of commercial permitted currently, but that is adjacent to, and sometimes directly across, from residential. And I would think that it would be best to keep that to Bevan Avenue on both the north and the south side. So with regards to Beacon Avenue, I included that. Our zoning bylaw prohibits many non-retail uses from fronting on Beacon Avenue, and the intention of that is to ensure that Beacon Avenue continues to be primarily a retail street with active storefronts that engage shoppers and are inviting to shoppers. Provincial cannabis regulations, similar to tobacco regulations, stipulate that tobacco and cannabis products cannot be visible from outside the store. And I think this is counter to the idea of having active storefronts, or the objective of having active storefronts. However, I think in consideration, we have a situation today on Beacon Avenue where we do have a tobacco retail location on Beacon Avenue. We also have three alcohol retail stores on Beacon Avenue. Two are not directly on Beacon Avenue. One is beside Shoppers Drug Mart in Nat Plaza, and the other is beside the Charles Dickens Pub. But we do have one directly on Beacon Avenue, down beside Beacon Landing Restaurant. And if you look at the storefronts, which I've done very recently, they are almost, they are very much blocked up in the front with regards to displaying other products with inside. And I might ask a question of staff. Do we have any information whether there are specific regulations for alcohol retail storefronts?
Through the chair to the mayor. There are regulations, but they aren't as direct as the cannabis regulations. So for the liquor stores, it seems to be a little more, a bit more of a gray area. The province needs to approve the signage for the store, but there's no direct regulation saying you can't, people from the outside can't be able to look inside the store. The stores are subject to the federal CRTC advertising requirements for alcohol, which restricts a lot of what can be visible from the street, but it's not as simple as you just can't see anything. There's some very specific and detailed regulations.
Yeah. And so with the three stores we have in Sydney, other than the glass see-through front doors, there is very little that can be seen from the storefronts. So we do have examples on Beacon Avenue with a tobacco, a directly on tobacco retailer, and an alcohol. And we also have some retail and service businesses. Home Hardware is an example, Royal Bank is an example, where part or all of their business, apart from their front doors, is covered up as well. So there are already exceptions on Beacon Avenue. Should we move forward with regards to cannabis? I'm suggesting we should, but I will leave it for further discussion. Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to speak about two things. One is your Part D of the motion, and where you're excluding retail sale of cannabis. No, the printed text says "and edibles and concentrates." I think you meant cannabis edibles.
Yes.
But with respect to the concentrates, currently cannabis oils are legal, and oils are a concentrate. So if you're going to prohibit that, you're prohibiting some of the products that are already approved for retail recreational use. And anyone who wants to buy those can currently buy those online, so they're going to be available in Sydney one way or the other. What you are doing, though, if you put that prohibition in, is, you know, you're limiting the products that a retail store can buy from the approved wholesale sources. I can see how, you know, the edible side of it is emerging, and maybe we should, and I'll say maybe, we should exclude it until they get the regulations in order. But the concentrates, I think you're being a bit too, you're either going to have to come up with a definition of concentrates that doesn't include the stuff that's already approved, or maybe we should just leave this out.
Through the chair, to Councilor Wainwright, I thank you for that information. I wasn't aware of some of what you said. I'd certainly be willing for a friendly amendment to remove concentrates. So as I understand it, with that information, I don't know if staff has a further thought that, so today, if a, sorry, retail concentrates or oils are allowed to be sold at retail, is what you're saying now, whether it's online or in a retail store?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I would actually amend that, or agree to remove that, if the second does.
So.
So, sorry, can you just clarify then, what D will read?
Yeah, D would, and I did insert an "and" where I shouldn't have, "to exclude the processing, distribution, and retail sale of cannabis edibles products in Sydney."
Yes, Councilor Wainwright?
So I can see your rationale about excluding businesses fronting on Sydney and James White, and certainly south of Bevan. I have to say, I don't have any issue with allowing them on Beacon Avenue. And part of it, you've already mentioned what I'm going to call the level playing field issue, where we've got other businesses, some of which aren't even alcohol or tobacco, that have essentially opaque storefronts. But we're not likely to see a lot of cannabis retail businesses in Sydney. So I'm thinking probably at most, we're looking at one on Beacon Avenue. And we have complete discretion about that, because if somebody applies for a license, even if the zoning's in place to allow it, we can say no, for no reason at all. But part of the thing I'm thinking is that we're likely to have some tourists who are interested in recreational cannabis. There's certainly a lot of cannabis-related tourism in other parts of North America. And why would we make it hard for them to find it? I mean, I suppose they can always Google it. They'll find it on a map and whatever, but I don't see anything particularly wrong with people passing it on the street. It's not as if you can even look into the building. So it, the only, the argument is what's in the staff report, that we're looking for a more interactive experience when people are walking down Main Street. But, you know, we're talking about probably just one exception, and we've already got several. So I don't see a reason for us to be that restrictive. I think it's actually worse if we have a vacant storefront than if we have one you can't see in.
Mr. Mayor?
I would suggest that with things like alcohol and cannabis, that people seeking to purchase retail will easily be able to find the location, and it would be within the downtown. It's not as if we're putting it somewhere in the back 40. But I would actually, you know, not within this motion, but at some point, perhaps, see council. There are jurisdictions in North America that have, in their zoning, that they don't allow businesses like financial institutions or others who typically have inactive storefronts on their Main Street. And I realize we're unlikely to see a change in financial institutions on the Main Street in Sydney, or possibly, you know, a hardware store or others currently there, but I think it's a direction that I would be in favor of moving in, but I'm open to the discussion.
Councilor Fallet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the discussion by both the mayor and Councilor Wainwright. I, too, don't have an issue with a retail cannabis store being on Beacon Avenue. I see the rationale with Sydney Avenue, James White, and Bevan. There is more of a residential sense to it, and Beacon, even if there are residences on Beacon Avenue, it is a commercial avenue. So I don't take an issue with a cannabis store being on Beacon Avenue. My concern is the blanking out of a storefront, and I would like to see that over future planning, that we can convince those retailers or service industries that are on Beacon Avenue that have the blank walls to change that. And I think to allow another business in, that is, by direction legislation has to have blank wall, would be counter to where I would like to see us go. So I'm going to go along with Beacon Avenue being restricted to the stores. I think putting them on the side street, don't have an issue with that. Thank you.
Councilor Rintul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to staff for the variety of options that are here for consideration, and clearly a lot of thought and research into what the other communities within the CRD are doing with regards to this. And I'll speak to that in a moment. But my first question through the chair to staff would relate to the subject matter on enforcement, the enforcement that is referenced here. And can I ask the staff whether or not there was direct consultation with the RCMP with respect to staff's input on that particular bullet?
Through the chair to Councilor Rintul, yes. I had an email conversation with Sergeant Connolly and asked for his input on what he expected to be any additional load in terms of enforcement and having more officers dealing with issues that come about if cannabis is legalized. And his opinion was there would not be any substantial additional workload.
Thank you. And is that in part, then, why the recommendation doesn't specifically speak to the bylaw officer's involvement potentially in enforcement? Or should I assume that that's something that would be written into this at a later date under one of the procedural or regulation pieces that staff would report back on?
Through the chair to Councilor Rintul, the reason for the lack of local enforcement options, I guess, is because the province has their own enforcement branch that deals with both liquor and cannabis infractions. So they'll go directly to a retail store and basically fine, or if necessary, close the store if they feel that there's an issue. And that's all done at the provincial level, usually without any involvement of local authorities.
Thank you. If I may, Madam Chair, then I guess one of my concerns is around the piece of consultation, and I appreciate that in the mayor's recommendation that he's put forward the opportunity of a communication plan, and looking for the public to be given opportunities to submit their feeding, sorry, their feedback in writing and online. And I appreciate that, because I think it's important to get that feedback for our community. The comparisons to, you know, a retail location for alcohol sales or tobacco sales, while they're perhaps pertinent with respect to the restrictions on retailing those products, I would suggest that we're here today looking at the future of our community and what we want to approve for the face of our community moving forward, you know, not what's happened necessarily in the past with respect to those retail opportunities. I'm partial to the second recommendation, in part because it gave us the opportunity to have some consultation with the community and get some of that feedback prior to having further dialogue on this matter. And so I've got some concerns of moving forward with the staff recommendation as amended, particularly in light of the other communities and sort of where they're at. And I look at the temporary permit approach that seems to have taken root in Central Sanwich and Langford, also, you know, prohibition in a couple of locations, although I anticipate that in the trueness of time, you know, those communities will have an opportunity to readdress and take a look at how they would like to address longer-term recreational cannabis sales. And to be clear, you know, my comments are with respect, obviously, to recreational sales of cannabis. These other communities appear to have taken perhaps more of a wait-and-see approach to let other municipalities, you know, move forward. And it appears from the report that Sanwich will have something under consideration very similar to what Sydney's seeing here. But at this point, I would be more comfortable in general, as we move into the period of OCP review, to take a more holistic look at this and what the right thing for our community is, and that would include some consultation on the front end with the community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rintul. Councilor Fallet?
Thank you, Chair. Just as a point of clarification on the amended, you're referring to James White Boulevard, right? It says James White Avenue?
Yes, I stand corrected.
Okay, yes, you know, in terms of writing enough to make sure it goes that way. It's legalized, so I believe we should, you know, follow the path, that we shouldn't deny people a chance to make a living based on a legal substance. So I'm in favor of the approach. I'm not 100% sure about the staff recommendation. I kind of like number six, the government-run one, just, I have my own kind of, I like the consistency approach to everything. I like the fact that there are a lot of regulations in place, but I believe the speed of having things canceled or stopped if something was defounded to not be working would be much quicker through government means when you're having a government-run operation. And I think it also would, for many in our community, would probably prefer that approach. But we'll wait and see. I agree with you, we need to know what the community feels. But part of me is like, I don't want to quell entrepreneurs and people who want to open small businesses at the same time. So it's, I'm kind of flipping on that one. But at the end of the day, the way I look at this is that, you know, we have, we allow the sale of liquor, it's legal. We have many buildings that provide that. It, as a substance, has probably killed more people and affected more people in a negative fashion than any cannabis products has over the course of time. Could still say the same thing about tobacco, and we sell that everywhere, it's legal, and gambling for that matter. All these things have tremendously poor effects on people, health and mental as well. And I haven't heard any argument saying cannabis causes all that. I don't believe it's a gateway drug. I haven't seen any science that says it is. And it's going to be regulated at every level, so it's not likely to be mixed with fentanyl or any of these other things like shatter that I've heard about. So, you know, you're going to get a clean substance that people will be able to use. People use it as a sleep aid, painkiller. Not everybody can get a medical card that allows you to get it, you know, the medical marijuana, so. And although I agree with Councilor Wainwright, that in the business I'm in, I see it, that online, you know, people can purchase their products online, but there's quite often a backlog and a delay, and I wouldn't want people, I'd like people to be able to have access to something if they're in need of it and not have to wait for something. So at the end of the day, it's a legal substance, so that's where I really have a hard time saying we shouldn't go forward with it. But I do hearken to the words of Councilor Rintul, that, you know, we do need to get the word of the public and find out what they feel about it, so. And I also don't have a problem with Beacon Avenue, given that we have other buildings that are blacked out, so. But as far as the rest of what you've written in there, I agree with mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I'm on board with most of the discussion that's gone on here tonight, so I don't really have anything to add, other than I'm still not sure about excluding it from Beacon. I do understand the rationale about having the active storefronts, and as Councilor Fallett said about trying to use this opportunity to start moving businesses in that direction, even though we know others have been grandfathered in. You know, realty and travel are not terribly active in terms of having people going in and out, so there's, you know, both the, whether you can see in and out versus, or versus having, you know, regular patrons going in and out and having that pedestrian traffic on the street. So there's different ways of looking at that. I think this would be one that would be an active storefront in terms of people going in and out frequently. This might contribute to foot traffic, right? So that would be another way to look at it. I also think that it would be a small shop. And when I think of the danger of having shops with a large blank, I think of, you know, a large chain pharmacy or something. And currently, we don't have any space like that. I suppose in the future, as things redevelop and larger commercial spaces get built, something like that could be built. But I feel like right now, it would be, it would be small, like the tobacconist, and that's what's available, and that's what's frequently vacant. And this might be actually a really good opportunity to have somebody move into one of those kind of small spots that a lot of stores right now are finding very difficult to get into. So I don't want to be too prescriptive about how we let businesses evolve on our street when we know that so many people are already concerned about the vacancies. And I would like it to be able to be more open to what can come in and what can survive and what can make it here, and hope that that helps, so. Thank you.
Councilor Wainwright?
So I'd like to just pick up on the wording of "one beat" in the motion that's being passed around. And it has to allow the commercial processing and commercial distribution of cannabis. And as I thought about this, distribution is strictly the purview of the provincial government. So, and they've got a big distribution center in Richmond with no plans of any other ones. I guess, I suppose there's no harm in allowing them to move from Richmond to Sydney, but I don't see any actual value in having that in there.
Mr. Mayor?
First, through the chair to Councilor Wainwright's point, I agree with what you're saying, whether the province decides to decentralize distribution in the future or not. Sydney is in a transportation hub at this end of the peninsula. There are a lot of, it might make sense as a distribution point, it might not be for some time into the future, but I don't see a reason for restricting it, and thus I included it. I also wanted to speak to public engagement, and I do appreciate, and it's important, the remarks that the Councilor Rintul made. In discussion with staff previous to the meeting, we foresee this draft bylaw and any related policies coming forward, perhaps within two or three months from now, something like that, maybe even four months. During the election campaign, I wouldn't, I don't want to suggest that cannabis was a top-election issue. However, I certainly had several discussions, and since have had discussions with people in the community. And in general, I think the community is accepting of a cannabis retail location in Sydney. I have met with a number of people, or a number of people have contacted me, who do not support a retail cannabis location in Sydney. But as I stated at the outset, my reasons for being in support. But I think between now and the time that staff bring forward the draft bylaw and the plan for communication, that following this evening's meeting and our discussion, we may or may not see engagement. may or may not see engagement individually or as a council from the public on this, either in public participation or in emails to us. And certainly, if there is feedback expressing concern, I would be for, I would be, I would be supportive of, of having a public town hall, you know, on the subject closer to the time we bring for the bylaw. But I think if, if council is majority, significant majority unanimous in support of, of having retail cannabis in Sydney, then I would suggest we move forward both the bylaw and, and engage in the necessary public participation engagement as we, as we move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Rintul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address, again, a slippery slope, I guess, if we get talking about, you know, comparing cannabis, but I, I would note from Health Canada's own reports that after-alcohol cannabis is the substance most often linked to car accidents, and, and is it a gateway drug or not? I don't know, I'm not going to speak to that. But I guess I go back to, you know, particularly in the context of Beacon, it's the front door to our town, it's the main street to the community, and to the community at large, frankly. And so I, I just want to wonder what sort of community people want to see and what they want to see represented on their main street. And so in, in my mind, I've heard the word vacancies, you know, thrown around like it's problematic, and frankly, I noticed shops, you know, boarded up for lease signs in some shops, and so maybe that's, maybe that's indicative of a, of a different problem. You know, maybe it's not that we need cannabis shops to solve the problem of vacancies in Sydney, and I know, no one here is ultimately suggesting that, or that cannabis tourism is, is, you know, going to be, you know, a, a big industry for us. It isn't. It's about, you know, choices, and that's why I go back to, you know, looking for input from the community, because I think it's a choice this community has to make, and, and not limited, obviously, to those of us at the front of this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garnett?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Through you to staff, so if we pass whatever amended version we've come to the conclusion of here at some whatever point, we still, we have to go through a public process, correct? Yeah, and we still can choose different options, this isn't, this, this isn't buckles into one particular thing, right? It's just opening the door for discussion and going forward with it?
If I can, through, through the chair to Counselor Garnett. So yeah, this is the first step in the process of moving towards, I suppose, the establishment of a draft bylaw for council's consideration. As noted in, in, in the, in the motion, you know, as part of that, when we bring it forward, and it could be as early as, it could be as early as July or August that we bring this forward as a draft, as a draft bylaw, but it's just that at that stage, it's for council's consideration. We would have a background report that would outline a, a potential communication awareness program. And the intent of that really is to create awareness amongst the public that a bylaw is being looked at, that council's considering a particular, a particular option, a path forward, and what that is. And as part of that, then, we would start, I'm sure, receiving comments from the community. All of that would be brought forward to council. There's a public hearing, there's an amendment to a zoning bylaw, so there's a public hearing process. And so with that process, there's certainly an opportunity for community engagement, and there's an opportunity for the public to, to weigh in, both by providing their comments in writing well in advance of the public hearing and speaking directly at the public hearing itself. So indeed, it's part of the process.
Yeah, then, given that, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, because then I think we're going to, we're going to get the public feedback that we need to make an educated decision, and, and we're not, we're not tied into any one thing, so we're just, you know, starting the process. So I think it's a good starting point, and I'm completely comfortable with voting for whatever we end up having in this, that we're in conclusion. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no other comments, I'll, I'll add mine. So generally, I'm, I'm happy with the town moving forward to have this available in the town. However, I think it's important to know, we've made, you know, a lot of comments about, oh, this is just like alcohol, this is just like tobacco, and to me, it's not that. Because it's a, we, we know, it's, it's a fact that Health, Health Canada has said, and in the literature that's out there, is that we know that it has, cannabis has a significant effect on the developing mind. And so in the strategies that have been put forward by government, there's a concerted effort in terms of ensuring that health of youth is protected and limiting access to them as well. So I think it's important that whatever we do, that we're, we're thinking of things like that. So in terms of the zoning, there's some information from the FCM that made a couple of suggestions, and I'm not sure if, if these are things that staff might consider in zoning bylaw, but they talked about preventing medical cannabis dispensaries from becoming legal non-conforming uses after legalization. And so they talked about, in their zoning bylaw, to, to ensure that only recreational cannabis retailers are permitted. So whether that's something we would want to include in our bylaw, I don't, I don't know, but just tossing that out there for consideration. In terms of the business licensing, so I note that it's mentioned that we think that the current $100 fee should be sufficient, it's really no different than any other business. However, I guess what, what I see is that there is a requirement for the town to consult with the public on each license request received, and we have to respond back to the, the LCRB on that and report with recommendations. So for me, that sounds like it's going to take a little bit more time than what we would do for any other business application. So I guess one of the thoughts I would have to staff as we're considering this is to, to think about that. And so what would be the amount of time that we anticipate that we would spend on that extra paperwork and consultation that would be required? Through you, Mr. Humboldt, to staff that question?
So all that stuff is covered under item three, the amendment to the land use procedures bylaw. So as part of that, we would do an analysis of what we think an average application processing time would be, the fees for the advertising, the public hearing, and so on and so forth. And that would be an application fee for a cannabis license, and that's separate from the business license. So once that application goes through and is approved, then they apply for business license, and we do the business license inspection of the actual premises. So it's two separate items.
Okay, good, okay, thank you for that clarification. Other things I wondered whether we might think about was, for example, hours of operation. So I don't believe that in our business licensing bylaw, and maybe through you, Mr. Humboldt, to staff, but I believe that our business license bylaws is, businesses can, it doesn't seem to be that there's a limit. And I notice in the, the guidelines for retail operations of cannabis stores that they're allowed to be open from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So I guess one thing that I thought was that, I don't know that I'm personally keen to have cannabis stores open till 11 o'clock, and whether there's a concern about that amongst council, but I think that, was wondering if that's something that had been considered.
Yes, we did look at the potential for including a specific sort of hours of operation component in the bylaw, but, so each application that comes forward, even after the zoning gets put in place, council would have the power to stipulate the actual hours of operation for that specific location. So similar to the way it works with liquor license applications, we get a referral from the province, we're required to consult with the public, we bring a report to council, we talk about some of the specific aspects of that location of the proposed liquor establishment, and in some cases, that establishment might be across from a residential development, for example. In that case, yes, it might make sense to say, well, you know what, this should probably close at 10 o'clock instead of midnight or something like that. Our thought was that this would be a similar process, so it would be dependent on the specifics of that application, where it's located, whether or not there's good cause to shorten the hours. If it's in an area with, you know, no residential at all, 11 o'clock might be fine, depending on its proximity to other residential or other uses, maybe a earlier closing time makes sense. So that, that was the thought process, anyway.
Okay, well, that's good, as long as we have the, the flexibility to, to do that, that sounds, that sounds fine for me. What else did I have here for you? I guess I'm moving along to going a bit away from the, the retail selling of cannabis to the bylaws about regulate, regulating personal growing. And so in the, the information from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, they, they say that this, this issue itself has the potential to, to generate a lot of, the most complaints. And so we do have, I believe, the opportunity to restrict the growing of the four plants to certain, certain areas of the town if we wish. And so, you know, one recommendation, I believe, made by UBCM, that we restrict personal growing in only detached buildings in maybe RS1 or RS3 areas. I also note that, so we have a lot of daycare centers in residential areas, and so should we be thinking about, are we going to, you know, to limit the growing of cannabis in areas around daycares? So I don't know what the answer is to that, but I thought maybe it's something we want to ponder and consider. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it might be, you, we could technically prohibit the growing of the plants in certain zones, but I worry about creating a bylaw that would be nearly impossible to enforce or would, would create a lot of difficulty in the amount of work that it would be. I feel like this would be one that would be easily captured by, you know, people trying to grow plants in a multifamily building and condos and things like that, where they didn't have the room, or perhaps they smelled, and so the neighbors didn't like it, that that would maybe be easily remedied by the stratas, simply having bylaws against it, whereas at the town level, I, I don't know, I, I worry it would, it would be ungainly, but perhaps that would be a question for staff. And the one about the daycares, it's, I know it's already prohibited to grow plants in a house that is used for a daycare. I don't know that the neighbors of the daycare should fall under the same regulations, because they're just, unless the children are expected to get out of the daycare and into the person's house and begin eating their houseplants, because that would, that would be the concern, right, is that children accidentally come across the plant and ingest it. It shouldn't be something that you would be penalizing neighbors for living next to a daycare, because then I worry about neighborhoods not wanting daycares and trying to exclude daycares from their neighborhoods. And that would be, that would have very poor unintended consequences. But if staff could answer the question about the, about whether we should zone different, exclude the growing in, in different zones, of whether that would create a workload problem?
I know at staff, at the staff level, we talked about this and, and debated whether or not we wanted to involve some type of municipal regulatory regime associated with, with, with personal growing. Our thought is, our major concern is, what you've already highlighted, Counselor Duncan, and that's, that's the enforcement aspect. And how much does the municipality want to get into, into trying to enforce something, which I think is very, going to be very, very challenging? You know, the feasibility of that, the viability of that enforcement and, and the resources potentially that that will involve, versus something that, quite frankly, is, is going to be, to be regulated through provincial legislation. So my, my thought is, why would we want to duplicate that and take something additional on? As soon as we start looking at zoning and zoning restrictions for this type of thing, again, we are going to be involved somehow from an enforcement perspective, because we will get the complaints, and there will be an expectation that the municipality will have the capacity to enforce that. And so we are setting ourselves up for a bit of a challenge, I think. That's, I think that's staff's perspective on it.
Counselor Wainwright?
I was going to support Counselor Duncan's comment about enforcement. The way the provincial regulations read, if you're growing plants at home, they're not allowed to be visible from the outside, so how are we going to even know that somebody's doing it? You know, you can prohibit it, but if you, you can't see it's happening, you know, there's zero ability to enforce it. And I think it would be just crazy to put effort into drafting regulations that we have no ability to enforce.
So I'll just, I, I think that those are good points, but I think it's things we should think about as we move forward, and that's why I like the idea of public consultation in regards to multifamily dwellings. It was a surprise to me that people are in multifamily dwellings, are allowed to grow four plants on their balcony, and that's okay. And it's not just that they can be, well, correct me if I'm wrong, that was my understanding, and that it wasn't that they can't be, they can't be viewed, is that they can be, they can't be viewed from a public place. So if I'm in a multifamily dwelling and I want to put four plants on my balcony, and if Counselor Rintul is living next to me and sees those plants, that he doesn't have any recourse, that you, that's, that's how I understand the regulation, but maybe I'll, I'll refer that question to staff for clarification.
Yeah, so if, if they were visible from a balcony from the street, that would be contravention of the provincial law. I suppose you could grow them in your closet or something like that. This is just anecdotal evidence, but virtually every strata that I've spoken to over the counter about cannabis has just put a blanket prohibition, and there's strata bylaws on this. I don't know if, I don't, I don't think there's been a single strata president that said, you know, we're okay with this. I think most of them view it with quite a bit of concern, just, you know, for moisture issues or what have you, so.
Okay, thank you. Did you have, nope. One other question I had was, so in regards to the, the enforcement, and I was just thinking about the CRD Clean Air bylaw, and I know that it now includes, includes cannabis as well. And we had, we had had a query from the Peninsula celebrations about having additional signage now that, that this is legal, and whether we have plans to, to increase our signage in certain locations around town, or whether we think that there's sufficient signage already for, to, to cover this.
I believe the approach was to deal with it on a, an organizer basis, so when there's an event that comes forward, that they would put up sufficient signage to prevent any kind of smoking within the area of the, smoke-free event, right?
Yeah, if we're talking, if I can add, add to Mr. Newcomb's comments, yeah, if we're talking about events, I thought you were speaking to signage in general, but if we're talking about events, yeah, I'm, I'm actually bringing comments forward as part of my six-month council action item update for the June 7th meeting, which speaks to that, and we are looking at, you know, specific signage for events, et cetera, that that deal with that, as well as, as well as event inspections by our bylaw enforcement officers, as well as the CRD in conjunction with.
And I guess just a follow-up question to that. I wonder, do we have a sense of what resources, if any, CRD are planning to, to put into this, seeing as it, this is sort of our first summer of a lot of different outdoor events, and people maybe not being familiar with new cannabis legislation, whether they're planning to, to come out and, and do a bit more enforcement for this, you know, upcoming you know, upcoming events during the summer?
Um, yeah, indeed, Madam Chair. I think that's been the, the, uh, the discussion that our bylaw enforcement officer has had with the CRD is about, about, um, actually coming out and, uh, potentially where needed, uh, uh, attending, uh, attending events with our bylaw enforcement officer. If, uh, if indeed there seems to be, uh, uh, an ongoing, uh, problem or issue and the, and the signage isn't, uh, isn't, uh, isn't working. So, uh, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple other things. So, in regards to nuisance complaints, so, um, the, the report from the RCM indicates that, that's probably one of the, maybe one of the biggest impacts for local government, just local nuisance. So, which might involve, um, uh, you know, neighbors smoking in their backyard and it drifting over the fence. And, you know, whether that's something we're going to, uh, be able to respond to or not, I, I don't know. And, uh, how we're planning to deal with tho- those sorts of things. And, um, I guess also in terms of, and, uh, previous, uh, members of the committee have mentioned the importance of communication and educating the public. And so some sort of strategy so that people know, who to call for certain sorts of things. So things to do with the Clean Air Bylaw to the CRD, the RCMP dealing with certain things and what, uh, items the town would, uh, be dealing with as well. So perhaps, uh, some additional information on that would be, uh, useful. And I think, um, we talked about the importance of, uh, communication. I like the idea of doing a, a lot of, um, consultation and communication upfront. It's something new. It's not exactly like tobacco or alcohol. I think there's, there's some different things about it that we have to be, uh, cognizant of. So I think having a, um, a good communication strategy and education strategy, moving forward is, uh, really important. Counselor Garnett?
Just occurred to me that given all this discussion and all the complexity of the issue, I would also like to thank, tell on staff for their work because it's, uh, you know, on the cusp and it's new. So you had to do a fair bit of research into something that's not always common knowledge for people. So I appreciate it. Um, just to, to a couple of your comments, as far as the nuisance and, you know, the smoke wafting, I mean, I've had neighbors who are smokers and I just have to get up and close my windows and unfortunately it's not great, but it's just part of life, right? And I would think it's very similar. It's not really much you can do about that. I'm as far, I, I agree, uh, you know, marijuana, it, it does affect the developing mind, but you, uh, you could also have this, the same argument about alcohol and, and tobacco. They have dilit- when we use the, the literatious, uh, effects on people over the course of time. And we're talking about a product you have to be nineteen to get. So, uh, and you can say, oh, yeah, but underage kids can get it, but they can get alcohol and tobacco as well, right? So I mean, it's not trying to make them be the same, but you could use the same sort of argument that, uh, there is a lot of negative effects from those, you know, substances as well. And they're legal and we allow people to sell them. And so, I mean, it's, it's, I get where you're coming from and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it, it's an adult product. And, um, if it's regulated properly, then that really hopefully will not be an issue. And, uh, I'm, I'm trusting that the people that are in the powers that be will do their jobs. Thank you.
Uh, through you, Mr. Hubbell, to, uh, Mr. Newcomb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add, uh, one thought, uh, with regard to the retail, uh, directly on Beacon issue. So I've, over the years, I've taken a number of courses and webinars and, and attended a conference or two on, uh, sort of small-town main street. Keeping them robust, keeping them exciting, keeping them, uh, as a major attraction. And, uh, one of the themes that's come across pretty consistently is that the retail stores on small-town main streets are sort of the weakest, uh, they're the first to go in a, in an economic downturn. And you really have to sort of, uh, protect those as kind of the, the lifeblood, but, but sort of the weakest link in, in, uh, Main Street. And, uh, one of the points that was made in one of the webinars was that competing with those businesses are places like banks that have a much greater potential to pay significantly more rent and are, and are much more resilient to economic swings. And so the, the point in the webinar is that the more uses you have that on your main street that are able to pay higher rents than retail, the more chance you have that over time, those uses are going to supplant, uh, the retail as it closes. And so the point in this webinar was that you really, as a town, need to take measured steps to, um, not, not allow the, the rents of those, uh, main street-fronting retails to rise above the level that, uh, that, you know, mom and pop retail stores were able to pay. Uh, so I, I don't know about cannabis and what sort of, you know, economic returns are there, but for a bank, for example, you know, they could easily outcompete a retail store and quite often do. Uh, so that's something else to think about.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I didn't really want to talk about the social harm of it because it's not really, the province was the regulator, the province is the health authority. They've settled it. We're just figuring out what to let in. But, um, going on an evidence-based thing, I, I, I don't want to try and be stricter with them as though they're, as though marijuana is different because it is different in that it's less harmful by a substantial amount. The one study that I found that's widely cited, though they're somewhat outdated now from the Lancet, uh, Alcohol's Overall Social Harm Score, Harm to Self and Harm to Others is seventy-two out of a possible one hundred. Cannabis is twenty. The number two spot was heroin at fifty-five. So I think they're probably outdated, just in that I know in the past little while, we've seen, I've seen a couple of articles, from doctors in emergency rooms where they've been seeing more cases of, I guess psychosis, schizophrenia, they think is on the rise. And they think that there may be a correlation to increased marijuana use. Um, and last week, the article I saw was where they were saying that there does appear to be a correlation with certain, certain DNA, like certain genetic profiles, people are more susceptible when they smoke pot. So it, in that respect, it may be, um, may be different. And people can know if you're at risk, if you have a family history of people with neuro- uh, mental illness, certain mental illnesses, you're more likely to be in that group. But again, they, they don't really have a firm, firm data on it. And the data we do have is that the gateway drug is alcohol. For anyone who ends up doing hard drugs and going further and having serious addiction problems and social harms, their worry when they're going to fall off the wagon is that they had a drink. And that's usually the thing they can't ever do again is drink because the drink leads to something else, leads to something else. So if a few drinkers decided instead to just go and smoke some pot instead, we would all be probably much, much better off. And, and I don't want to be more restrictive than we are with liquor and tobacco. With something we have no evidence is actually more harmful, as Counselor Garnett said, in terms of damaging young brains. I'm certain alcohol's got to be pretty far up there too. Huffing, all sorts of things that they could do that would be much worse than taking what is now a government-regulated and standardized something that somehow somebody must have booted for them if they got it because they're not nineteen in the first place. So, yeah, let's, I guess, move forward with what we got. It sounds like we're all on the same page here, so.
Counselor Rintul?
Yeah, thank you. I, and I guess, uh, in terms of being more restrictive or not, I think, I think the issue there is that, uh, this is new. This is evolving. And because the federal government says it's okay, you know, we're, we're in the situation where, uh, you know, we're addressing this. And that's good. It's, it's, uh, it's before us and it should be. It, it can't be ignored. But to speak to, uh, to speak to this like it's, that there's not a risk associated with it, um, I mean, we weren't here when, when, you know, we're talking about placing an alcohol store here or there, tobacco shop here or there. We're here for this discussion. Seems to me like we're moving a little more quickly than the other communities in the CRD. Health Canada states that young adults are more likely to experience harms from cannabis because their brains develop until age twenty-five. These problems include dependence and disorders related to anxiety and depression. Cannabis can also harm important aspects of your thinking, like learning and memory. We know this. Like, that's not a shock to anyone around the table. So I don't know that, um, you know, it needs to be paramount in, in our discussion. We need to be cognizant of it. We need to, to think about what we want on our, on our main street for this community and, and, uh, and how we can, you know, support a, a vibrant community, you know, goals that, that we have. And so in addressing this, I'd like to look through that lens and I'd like to hear what the community has to say before we make a decision. Thank you.
Counselor Wainwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, we seem to be dealing with a lot of aspects that, um, really are, are, don't relate directly to whether we're going to allow, uh, retail sale in Sydney. Cause, you know, the products available to anyone who's of legal age. You might have to wait while it gets shipped from Richmond. And if you don't want to wait, uh, you can drive into Victoria. In fact, we can encourage you to make a shopping trip into Victoria instead. Which I, I don't think we want to do. And I don't think our downtown, uh, business district wants it. I am supportive of the idea of getting public input on this, but I don't want to go overboard on that because, you know, it, this is a zoning bylaw amendment. It's got to have a public hearing. That is a process that is pretty noticeable. We've had public hearings where there've been hundreds of people who've turned up because they care about the issue. I suspect word is going to get out on this one and is going to be pretty widespread. In fact, if we don't do anything but advertise for a public hearing, we're probably going to get a lot of input. I'm, I'm fine with, uh, doing something a bit above that, but I have to say, I'm not looking for, um, and will not support a six-month public engagement process on something like this. Because, you know, the federal government kind of already went through that. There was a lot of input. I, we'll see what happens, but I, I'm just not in favor of going overboard. And I guess part of it too is that, um, it, it's legal and people can already get it. I don't see why we should embark on a process that's going to take us six months to make a decision. I think we should, you know, put it out there for the community, give us some input and then make the decision and move on. We've got lots of other things we should be doing.
Thank you, Counselor Wainwright. Counselor Fallon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Counselor Wainwright. I think, uh, the public consultation will come through the, the process that we're on. And to go into an extensive one is really not the best use of staff's time and, and the process. So, uh, that's that. The second one is, um, I thought about what, uh, Mr. Newcomb was talking about earlier regards to Beacon Avenue and, um, it made sense. And I, uh, I'm going to back off with including Beacon Avenue as an exclusion for the, um, location. And on that note, I would say that when it comes to, uh, approval of the, of the, uh, the motion, that we break it down into sections. Because as it stands right now, I'm not going to, um, vote in favor of number one. Uh, I would go through with the rest. So, on that note, I would say, so I, because right now, the, the motion, the way it reads is excluding businesses fronting onto Beacon Avenue. I've, I've changed my mind on that. I don't have an issue with it being on Beacon Avenue. I can go along with Sydney Avenue, James White, et cetera. But I think, uh, my reasons for, for including Beacon Avenue, um, made sense what Mr. Newcomb said and, and I agree, agree with that. He was talking about, um, we've already got empty storefronts. We've got banks that, that are there. And as Counselor Duncan said, we've got smaller stores. Are we going to stop the activity of a retail potential there? So I don't have an issue with a cannabis store going into Beacon Avenue. Did I?
Clarify, clarify my comments.
Yes.
What, what I'm saying is essentially the cannabis store may be the superior competitor to retail. Sort of retail clothier, clothier, or, or, uh, that type of thing. So I think there's a possibility, I don't know this for sure, but I think there's a possibility that the cannabis store uh, would be able to outcompete, uh, other stores that would have that sort of active, um, main street presence. And over time, I mean, it, the main street thing is sort of a death by a thousand cuts. You, you can see there's a few businesses like, uh, real estate offices or so on, that type of thing on, on Beacon Avenue already. And if the whole street turned into that type of environment, I think we would lose something very special. And so.
Oh, I really misunderstood you.
Yes. So, so I think the fewer types of businesses we have on Beacon that can outcompete those traditional retail stores, the better. I, I'm not saying that cannabis retail is one of those because I don't have any information on that. But I think it's likely that the amount of rent that a cannabis retail store could pay is higher than a clothing seller.
Okay, understood. Wow. That one got me right off trail. So, um, okay.
You're good.
I'm good with it.
Counselor Wainwright and then Counsel.
I still would like to see us, um, deal with the first part of the motion as one vote and then everything else as another. I'll give a bit of a counterpoint to, uh, um, staff's commentary about the question about what they pay in rent. What we're looking at potentially is an anchor tenant. And in fact, a lot of retail very much like to be next door to a high-traffic business because they get a lot of spinoff. So why would we relegate this kind of thing onto one of our side streets? Why not allow them on Beacon?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd, I'd like to respectfully dis- disagree with the comment that it would be a, um, sorry, I just forgot the term, an anchor tenant, uh, on Beacon Avenue. I really don't think that would be the case. And I would go, I would, I'd say a couple of things. I, I don't want to speak to the points I've already said in, in support of why I put it in the motion, uh, whether it's the face of the community, whether there's economic reasons, uh, whether, I don't think we should be considering trying to fill vacancies with a particular business. But if, uh, if council, uh, uh, is looking to move parts of this separately because of the concern over Beacon Avenue, I might suggest, like, a council or make an amendment, uh, test of the mo- uh, test, uh, by way of an amendment to whether to include Beacon Avenue or not. Uh, and then proceed with the motion.
I'm fine with the motion as it is myself. Um, just one, I, I just want to touch on something Counselor Rintul said. Just going back to, uh, you know, comparing cannabis to alcohol and other sorts of drugs. And I guess what's important, I think, is that we have, we have history that tells us that these things weren't good. And we know that there's some health issues with this. And so in terms of how we approach it, I think it's good to look at it through that lens because it's not the same. And yes, currently there's more, uh, health issues with, with alcohol. But it's something that has been readily available and easy to access for, uh, a number of years. So maybe ten years from now, we'll, we'll see something different. But I think it's at least a, an important lens on how, how to look at things. My last point and, uh, comment, uh, for staff, um, is about costs. And so UBCM talked about possibly tracking costs related to cannabis. So there could be costs, for example, uh, the time to process and respond to license requests, potentially additional policing costs, administrative costs to review and amend existing bylaws. Maybe enforcement costs, uh, dealing with nuisance complaints. So I don't know if we're, we're planning to do that. And I guess, but I'm also wondering is, it's noted in the various literature that, um, there might be some funds coming to, um, local governments through the province from the, the tax on this. And whether we anticipate that there would be strings attached to that money that it would be you, it would be available to local governments to, uh, cover the expenses of those things. And so therefore, whether it's, we need to be tracking that stuff ahead of time. And so, therefore, whether it's, we need to be tracking that stuff ahead of time.
I'll start it. I guess from staff's perspective, that we're not anticipating it's going to be a major cost issue at this point. Certainly, we are going to monitor it and, and I guess, take a look at what, what our, our timing is for reviewing these applications and, and what the additional staff resources might be involved, et cetera, whether it's processing applications, whether it's the notice provisions for, for each application that we receive, whether it's by law enforcement. And again, the jury's out in terms of how many applications we're actually going to get on this. You know, we may only see one application that council sees, potentially approves that. And we may not see another one for, for quite some time. And, and council can make that determination, whether it wants to see more than one or more than two. So, quite frankly, if, if the liquor licensing process and applications, any, any sign of, of, of costs and resources spent, at this point, we're not, we're not anticipating a, a major, a major cost implication associated with this. At least not now.
Okay.
One last point, I promise, Madam Chair. It, I think it's important to note, though, although marijuana's substance was illegal, it has been readily available and accessible for a coit sometime, if you want to find it. So, I think there would be plenty of research to indicate what effects it might have, might or may not have had on somebody in terms of alcohol and tobacco. That's just something I think throw up there. Thanks.
Anything else? Oh, we ready to call the question? Do you want to read, reread the motion to?
Okay, number one, that staff bring forward a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number 2015. A, to allow the retail sale of recreational cannabis within the downtown Sydney C1 zone, which is commercial, excluding businesses fronting onto Beacon Avenue, Sydney Avenue, James White Boulevard, and on the street south of Bevan Avenue. B, to allow the commercial processing and commercial distribution of cannabis in the West Sydney M1 Zone Industrial. C, to exclude the commercial growing of cannabis in Sydney. D, to exclude the processing, distribution, and retail sale of cannabis edibles products in Sydney. Number two, that staff prepare a draft policy for council's consideration that would guide the consideration of recreational cannabis license applications in Sydney. Three, that staff prepare an amendment to land use procedures bylaw number 1380 to include an application fee for cannabis-related business license applications. Four, that staff review and if required, bring forward amendments to business license bylaw number 2119 and municipal ticket information bylaw number 1975 to ensure that these bylaws are consistent with the regulation of cannabis within the town of Sydney. And number five, that staff bring forward, when the bylaw is brought forward, a plan for communication on public awareness of the process for these bylaw and policy changes, including the opportunity for the public to submit their feedback in writing, online, and at council meetings.
And I would suggest that we ask for point one to be voted separately from the other four.
Yes.
Through the chair, to Council Fallon, and, and do the reason again, sorry.
Because I think we have some differing opinions on whether or not Beacon Avenue is to be, or the, the streets are to be excluded. And I would not want the whole motion to be split on that vote because of that one section.
And through the chair, could we not test it with, with an amendment?
I'll move that we amend the motion by deleting Beacon Avenue.
Second? Those in favor of the, the amendment to the motion? One, two, three, four opposed? Okay, so we'll move forward with that amendment then. Okay, so, we will, so the amended motion that now excludes Beacon Avenue from that first sentence?
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, we're discussion then? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of the new motion? And those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you for that discussion. There being, there being no other business on the agenda. I'll call the question.
Move adjournment?